The April twenty seventh, Venter City Commission meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of flag. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Thank you. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Commissioner Crevel.
Here.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Landgraf.
Here. Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We have a couple of short presentations this evening. Uh, the first is for Arbor Day. Um, tomorrow is Arbor Day, which I thought was the same day as Earth Day, but it apparently is not. So tomorrow is Arbor Day. So we have a short proclamation. I am not going to read that whole thing to uh into the record, but it I'll start out. Celebration of Arbor Day in eighteen seventy-two, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture. That a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And that's how Arbor Day started. Uh, so in eighteen seventy-two on April Friday, April twenty-eight. Three, we will celebrate that. So in proclamation, I will sign that tonight. And that'll be put on file.
Just a quick comment. I was lucky enough to go to uh tree planting at the V E C C this afternoon with the green team. And a class and some of the science teachers. It was a a really nice little event today.
Cool.
And planted some trees around the pollinator garden. Um, at the V E C C. So ultimately, there'll be some trees there. No, I didn't.
Good. There you go.
All right.
Also, we just expanded that pollinator garden, I think, yesterday, right? This week. This week, we widened, gave them some more space and dropped off some mulch.
Saw that. There's trees gonna grow there now. Yeah, around it. So there's six or eight trees there. Kids were really engaged. The teacher was really engaged. It was a nice full event.
So the second two proclamations that we have uh for the record tonight is for two Eagle Scouts. Uh, I was honored to be at their ceremony a couple of weeks ago, um honoring Jake Hocker. Um, these two young Jake Hocker and the other one's first name and Cooper Kane. Amazing young gentleman. The 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 stuff that they've um not only gone through, but but proven themselves to get this. To get this level of scouting is amazing. Uh, one of the young boys is going to, I think, University of South Dakota. He's gonna study aeronautical engineering. Just just a sharp young man. Both of both of them were. Um, it was a really nice presentation. Uh, I wish I had these that day, which like we'll have to work on next. Not, I'm looking at Lisa and not blaming her at all. It's my fault for not asking for something like this. Cause you had Congressman Van Drew was there. You had all the county people. And and Assemblyman Don Guardian all handing the kids something. They gave him a Venter pin. I thought that was cool. So.
So I saw the John List because.
Yes. And we can do that. We will do that. Yeah, that's a good idea. Again, the two young boys are just amazing young gentlemen. Their families, the commitment to to scouting was was uh. Well deserved by them. And it was a really, really emotional ceremony. Um, one of them lost his father in a few years, so. And as part of this, so it was it was a really good uh experience for me. And I was happy to be there. So yeah, let's let's do that. If we can scan them and post them on our social media and then we'll get them. Patty knows the families well. We'll get them to those there's two families. I do wanna uh reinstitute our department head reports. I wanna bring them back probably at our maybe at our second meeting in in May. Um, just to kind of give people an update on that. We're not having it tonight. I'm not putting anybody on the spot tonight, but we do wanna bring those back. Maybe every other month we try and bring them. You guys agree with that?
Absolutely.
Capital as well, yeah. Um, I won't do them in the same meeting. Maybe we do them. Uh, we alternate them, something like that. Yeah.
For us, I'm not sitting in the meetings anymore, but even for the public to hear what we're working on and what's coming in, what's coming up. It'd be nice for uh the public to hear as well as myself, cause I'm not sitting in the meetings anymore, since I'm not administrator, to hear what we're working on. And what's coming up, what's in the queue. So we can get excited about that.
Agreed. We'll give you guys plenty of heads up for that. Uh, maybe a day or two. Uh, this is our work session. So this, these items are scheduled for action tonight and discussion. Um, the first thing we'll do is we don't have any minutes to approve. We won't be doing any of that. We have three ordinance introductions. We have ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero six, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-three. Section five regarding violations of penalties of operations of motor vehicle, motorized bicycles, uh mainly on the boardwalk. Um, so we've been getting a lot of complaints. Uh, I know my office has. I'm sure Chief, you have. Um, Lisa has and and the mayor's office in general, Commissioner's office in general, has been getting a lot of complaints about. These motorized bicycles on the boardwalk. Um. Uh, I I seem to, to me, they're the old mopeds. They're, you're you're supposed to have a driver's license to have them, but apparently you don't. You're supposed to wear a helmet. Nobody does. Uh, they can do thirty miles an hour. Um, these 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 motorized bicycles, they do not belong on the boardwalk. Um, I have heard, and and this is not, uh, we're not starting this. This has been in on the records for years now. No motorized vehicles are allowed on the boardwalk. Uh, these are, these are motorized vehicles. So. We are going to increase the fines, um, because the twenty-five dollars seems a little insufficient. Uh, we're gonna start out with, um, I think we went to two fifty as your first violation?
Two. Two.
Was it two?
It's it's a, yeah, it's a, it, we have the ability to go up to a thousand dollars, so we can set the range.
Fifteen hundred, we're going up to.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah. So the first violation would be two hundred, second is five, and then we jump to fifteen hundred for everyone thereafter. Um, it's really, we're trying to make it deterrent. Watching some of the the posts on our on our website, uh, with regard to it, there is a concern. By some of the public that are elderly and maybe not be able to ride a bike up there that have these pedal assist bikes. But I think it's hard, and this is why I why I asked uh Tim to ask you here, Chief. I don't think there's any way we can differentiate those. Uh, that that was my my question. Um, you know, some of the. The comments, and I I don't know how we would do this, you know, you just look at the ones that are that are acting aggressively on the boardwalk. Um, but that's hard to, you know, how do you, then then you're looking at someone's opinion. This way, it's it's hard and fast if you're on the boardwalk with a with a motorized bicycle. Um, you know, obviously, the ones that are gonna be driving erratically and too fast are gonna be the first ones we see. Um, but I think we have to enforce something like this and and we look forward to to more discussion.
Yeah, the other thing is that this type of activity come is increased when uh when it's nice out, obviously, when the summer months are here. So. You're seeing a lag between our summer specials being on board that can. That we, Chief and I have talked about dedicating them more specifically to this type of enforcement. Um, that is not gonna happen until mid-May, when we they they all become on board. So.
Right.
With the added volume of people, we'll come more complaints, but our plan is to also enforce it stronger during those months.
It's a fairly hefty third offense, the fine, but I would imagine once you get to the second offense, you're not gonna get to the third offense.
Right.
I would.
We have, we have bike lanes on Atlantic Avenue. If you're gonna ride that fast.
Yeah.
That's where you should be doing. That's where you should be doing that.
Yeah.
So. All right. This is just the introduction tonight. We will have a public session at our next meeting. Where that gets adopted. The second ordinance being introduced is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven. An ordinance amending chapter seventy-nine, section seven regarding violation of penalties for having animals on the boardwalk. Similar complaints, a lot of complaints with people walking their dogs on the boardwalk. Um, and very similar fine structure, two hundred hours for the first offense, five hundred hours for the second. And fifteen hundred hours for one there, uh, that one and thereafter. Um, again, dogs are not permitted up there at any time. Now, we did get a question, bless you. Uh, and Chief, you helped me answer this. I think Mark did as well. If you have a a certified service dog. You are allowed to have that dog on a leash on the boardwalk. That's correct? But if it's just, you know, your dog walking on the boardwalk, I'd love to take my dog up there. I do not. You're allowed to walk across and go to the beach with your dog. That's it. Not on the boardwalk.
Yeah, and and we can make these stricter, but we're we're choosing not to, to we we could eliminate some of these uh abilities for bikes and dogs, but. But that's not really the face of Venter that we wanna uh we wanna project. That's a uh, we wanna have that that beach atmosphere, that friendly atmosphere. We just need. To enforce the exceptions, not the.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's, I think I said that at the last meeting with regard to short-term rentals.
Right.
You know, most of the people do follow the rules. The ones that don't cause problems for. But the 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 next one is, it was the impetus of it was an attack on the beach.
Right.
Dog. So. That that's really the impetus of this and and the complaints that we've been receiving. So hopefully that'll curtail that. Again, the open, the public portion of that question on that'll be uh at our next meeting.
Right.
Next ordinance introduction, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, ordinance amending chapter one oh five, section fifteen. Regarding violation of penalties regarding unleashed animals. This is on the beach. It's actually anywhere in the city. Um, but specifically on the beach, same structure of fines. Two hundred hours for the first offense, five hundred for the second, and fifteen hundred for third and a subsequent offense thereafter. A lot of people are on the beach with their dog off the leash. You have to have your dog on a leash. There's no exceptions to that rule, whether it's a.
Small dog or big dog?
Small dog, big dog, no matter what. It needs to be on a leash. We had a young lady attacked a couple of weeks ago by a dog that was off a leash. This will be enforced extremely strictly. Um, if I see someone walking, and I'm on the beach every day with my dog on a leash, I see another dog there, I'm gonna call the office and have a police officer come down. I'm tired of seeing it. It's a problem. Uh, oh, he's fine, he's fine. No, he's not fine. He's gonna run off and he can he can attack somebody. And that's exactly what happened. So we're not gonna allow that to happen anymore. So lease your dogs. I don't mean to be rude about that, but it is a, it is a problem.
So ju- just to summarize, all three of those penalties are 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 being are being increased.
Correct. Correct. They are. We have no public hearings, um, or adoption of any ordinances tonight. We have resolutions that we will adopt uh by consent. Resolution, the first one, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-nine. As a refund of five hundred hours for a sewer connection permit. To Gary Tavella, doing business as Fresh Start Builders for sixty-seven oh nine Atlantic Avenue, Venter City, New Jersey. Kind of self-explanatory, didn't need to, didn't need to pull um permit. Any questions there? Next one is uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash one four zero. It's for a thirteen hundred and fifty dollar refund for sewer and water connection permit to one oh three South Troy LLC. For one oh s- one oh three South Troy Avenue, Venter. Same kind of thing. They overpaid their their fee. Permitting fee. The next one is twenty twenty-three dash one four one. It is a uh appointing members of the Venter City School Board. We had uh two of our members, their 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 appointment was up, coming up in in May. We're gonna reappoint Kim Bassford and Michael Letney.
Great.
They've been doing good work for us. They're 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 good assets.
Yeah.
I talked to Chief Biagi, uh, he said absolutely, they do great work. And they both responded. We sent letters out to them and they responded. They're interested. Be careful what you volunteer for, right?
Right.
Not in the room, you get appointed, but they did respond that they wanted to uh to remain on the board and. Uh, they're they're good active members. Uh, so we're good with that. Next is twenty twenty-three dash one four two. Is uh resolution setting the date of abandoned uh abandoned vehicle auction. And we have two of those. The next one is the same. I had a list of vehicles. You had a BMW.
Yeah.
And a um.
Chevy.
And a Chevy. Then we had some, and the next one, yeah, that one. Why two separate ones, Chief? The reason we have two separate auctions or?
One was for DP towing. His.
Uh, okay. Gotcha. Understood. Thank you. Cause the very next one is uh one forty-three is setting a date for abandoned vehicle auction, and that's for. Four Jeep and a Chevy and a Chrysler, so. Mostly barely old cars.
Take a look at the BMWs.
Yeah, right. Couldn't use them as as alternative uh police vehicles. They just weren't there. Seen too many miles on them. Gotcha. See, Hamilton has one. They were, they got in a drug bust. It's like a nineteen. Yeah, maybe late nineties Cadillac. It's kinda fun. Um, twenty twenty-three, one forty-four is authorizing a shared service agreement with Atlanta County uh for the uh Seakin Island brining services. Um, this came to us through the county shared services group. And what they've done is it was a leap grant to get the the truck right in. So we got a a um, the city of Venter got a dump truck out of it and a brining uh piece of equipment that attaches onto the back of that truck. Um, as part of that grant, getting that that vehicle, we have to brine the county roads, so Wellington Avenue, Dorset and Venter Avenue. Um, as well as following that down into Margate and Longport. And we're also doing Atlantic. Instance in our city engineer.
As as part of this agreement, it is is just the county roads.
Okay.
Um, we can in the future consider a a shared service with Longport and Margate. Um, individually to do Atlantic Avenue, but for this agreement, it is Venter Avenue from Longport. To Dorset, Dorset out to Wellington, Wellington, to Albany, and that and that is it.
Okay, good.
And they reimburse us for our time, for labor and equipment time.
And the brine. You get the brine for free.
They provide the brine for free.
Now, we'll be able to do our streets as well as off outside of that.
That is correct.
Good. Um. Next one is one forty-five, which is change order number for Ocean Avenue curb and sidewalk replacement and parking improvements. That's right outside the building here. I don't know if you guys have a chance to look what they're doing.
Yeah.
Moving along pretty quick. However, they got a late start due to some weather delays, so all of this is is a time extension.
Right.
Gives them another few weeks. They'll they'll be finished hopefully by mid to third week in May. I think we extend it to the end of May, but. Just as an alternative, but uh moving pretty quickly.
It's gonna be a great improvement for that corner getting around.
Yep, and it also added our, you know, electric vehicle charging station. So which we have one in in operation already for uh Code Office. That's working out pretty good. Yes, we charge it like once a week. Really? Yeah, we have a station over at Public Works.
Nice.
So it works out really good. Uh, resolution one forty-six, negotiation of an award of contract to Jersey Shore Cape Restaurant Group for food and beverage concessionaire. This is to um uh activate the old Piermaster space on the pier. Um, this was, this is exciting for us. This is what we've been trying to do for a while.
Yeah.
Ever since we thought of that building.
Yeah.
You know, we came, honestly, Tim came up with the idea to do this. Um, so what this will do is it'll it'll authorize. Our city administrator to negotiate a contract with this group, Jersey Shore Cape Restaurant Group, which is the owners of Nucky's, if no one knew that. Um, I didn't know that, so I looked right now, but.
Yeah.
Same group. Um, as part of that, they will have um coffee carts.
Right.
Like they do in Stone Harbor on the beach. So you have cold brew coffee. But they'll be walking up and down the beach similar to our ice cream guys selling coffee.
And and I was a little bit, um, I don't know, just, you know, something new. I wasn't sure if that was something that will take place, so I'd looked at, looked how they're, they're very successful in uh. In uh in in the wildwoods, and they have a couple different other options in the morning for for beverages. So uh. We we thought we would um give them as much leeway as they can to be successful in that building. I'd also like to see them. Have the ability to open up on on good weekends where the crowds happen to show up like they are now on a on a weekend. Give them the ability to open up and um and serve uh coffee or snacks in the mornings uh on the shoulder seasons.
Right.
As well as, and I think there's some some constraints about making sure that they're open for more of a day to Labor Day. But if you can imagine, uh, we don't have a commercial boardwalk, but now we will have a landmark right in the middle of our boardwalk, which. Is just another way to bring people to the city.
Yeah, and they were excited to to get involved in it, you know, honor their manager's been. Chomping at the bit.
Yes.
We start, what can we start? So I think we're working with them to get them a key to get in there. They're they're gonna do some renovations inside there. Uh, put a sink in, a couple of other things.
Yep.
Uh, to get set up. No cooking will occur in there. Um. Our fire department or fire official said no, no cooking, so.
No.
It's all gonna be pre-prepared foods and things like that, so.
Uh, maybe bring back the bucket that they used to. Lower down or sell sodas.
Right, right. Not a bad idea. Okay, one, resolution one forty-seven. It's authorizing an award of contract to the Art Department Design Studios LLC for marketing and advertising on on city event or property. Um, these are essentially the banners throughout the city.
Right.
I'll let Commissioner Crevel talk about those a little bit.
Yeah, the banners have been a really successful um way to help advertise local businesses. Local businesses get always get a first shot at that. But we're also opening it up to other so-called assets in the city, places like the parks, uh, the the rec fields, the fences. And maybe even some merchandise that would be linked to the city under this advertising. So we're open to that. We're we're, this allows them to continue the work that they're doing. Which is a profit share with the city, as well as look at other opportunities that can also be profit shares for the city. So it's a good, it's a good way to, good way to get a little bit of, it pays for the cost of the banners and a little bit more.
The banners were very well received. And they're they're really nice. They're really well done.
They happen to be a very good, high-quality, the art department has is a good quality uh uh graphic design and marketing firm. So their stuff is always. And and they take care of all the client, they take care of all the paperwork. They work with probably hundreds of clients. Do all the background work, do all the logo work, do all the graphics work, print the banners, and then they assist us with going pole by pole and make sure the. The people that wanted a banner on the right pole get to the right place. So this is a, you know, it's a, it's it's, and it's all out of the city's hands, but it makes us look.
Yeah, it's good. I I saw one just from a family.
Yeah.
They wanted it right in front of their house. That was kinda neat.
Yep.
It's nice. Good?
Yeah.
We have to look down here, cause I'm used to being in that seat looking this way. Nudge me. Resolution one forty-eight, it's wording a contract to American Pipe Cleaning LLC. For the twenty twenty-two main storm cleaning and video inspection of the city of Venter not to exceed a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. This is Venter Gardens Plaza. We're not in Venter Gardens Plaza. Well, that's the name of the street. It's not that plaza. It's the Plaza Venter Gardens over in Venter West, um, where the pump station is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that pipe has probably existed there. There's two pipes. One, I think Ed was saying it, it has been there since. The forties, probably. The other one since the seventies. They've never been cleaned. Um, that area floods on heavy rainstorms. That's why the pump is there, but it also drains a good portion of Margate.
Hmm.
When it comes down, Fredericksburg, Monmouth Avenue there into our piping system that goes down. That's why that's a shared pump station. We we both, Margate and and Venter pay for the maintenance of that. So um, this is a project to clean those pipes and video them. To show where there might be issues. We think there's a blockage somewhere.
Hmm.
Cause they're not functioning the way they they should. Um, so that's the start when we find any issues.
We should look at that, the Margate agreement, to see what we can build for, if anything, on that.
We've tried that, or, yeah, so. Um, we will look into that when when the repairs come along. Um, Tom is, Tom will certainly reach out to Margate and see if. Ed already had reached out to them about this contract, and we got no response. So maybe maybe open up that contract mark and see what it says. See if there's any requirement for them. It says system or just the pump. So if if you could take a look at that, that might be helpful. But it's work that has to be done, and it's the flooding that we're concerned about is within our borders. So and it and it floods there quite often. Not tidal, but uh mostly rainwater, but it does flood sometimes. That's it for resolutions. We have to add a couple to the bench from what I understand, Maria, or uh Lisa.
Yes, please.
So resolution one forty-nine. Is authorizing the hiring of Donna Logue as clerk one. She's gonna assist in.
Oh, oh, what, I, we had a bit brief interview with today. She's gonna, she was gonna be assisting with the special events and the rec department. She's a, I think she's gonna be a great fit. Um, she'd worked in the um. Uh, Beach Badge, uh.
Right.
A- areas here in the city, so she knows the department. She knows some of the people she'll be working with. But um, she's uh just coming off of the Disney uh program where she was. Partially responsible for setting up the the tapes and the fireworks for every single night, that kind of crowd management on Main Street management. Making sure that all the people are 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 safe and getting to the right places for for those types of events. So. I think she's uh gonna be, and and she's got a lot of uh uh unique qualifications that I think make her a good fit for the rec department and the special events department. So she'll be starting on Monday.
Good, and she's been working for us.
Part-time, she's full-time.
Beach badge check.
Yep.
Very proficient, a lot of energy.
Yes.
Good. And the second one is uh resolution one fifty. Awarding Nicholas Construction Contract to resurface the seven pickleball courts at Suffolk Avenue. Recreation complex not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. We've had this waiting for almost a month. We couldn't get a second price in order to do these. These bids, the the awards, we need at least two prices. So we finally got the second price and it was higher than these guys, so. We're we're in good shape.
So this includes the tennis courts?
No, it's just a pickleball.
Just a pickleball. Seven.
Seven pickleball. The resurfacing of the tennis courts was done a few years ago. We do need new poles.
Right.
And they're ready, they're almost ready to go.
Okay. Okay.
I should say.
So. All right, I'll pass that on. I'm getting some calls too.
Yeah.
And is the grant, is the grant paying for this? The grant we were recently awarded paying for this? No, okay.
That was, this was already in the works. All right, that's all the resolutions I have, right, Lisa?
Great.
Okay, so we have um. We will then have bills and payroll. And then we have some discussion items to go through tonight. First one is yours, Ed. It is um a revocable license for residential encroachment, sixty-seven seventeen, sixty-seven nineteen, Atlantic Avenue. Let's go through that for us a little bit.
Yes, Mayor, the the um, and we received an application for a residential encroachment license request. The encroachment is two point six feet by the entire frontage of the building. It's basically for bay windows or bump out. Um, an existing bump out on the structure on the second floor. Uh, the the applicant has received planning board approval. Uh, for, I think, some consolidation and also for the mixed use. Part of that approval had a condition that they also install a landscape. Um, planner in the front of the structure underneath the the bay windows that encroach. So it's the three. Two stories of the of the bay windows which encroach, and then the planner which encroaches. But it still leaves at least ten foot or thereabouts of sidewalk, so it doesn't encroach within the public. Uh, or interfere with the public's uh enjoyment of that sidewalk. So I, my recommendation is to approve.
I remember that coming from the planning.
Yeah.
That's good. And a lot of those old structures had those bay windows that just protruded out. So, all right, good. So we'll have that on for our next meeting. Good, thank you. Uh, the next one is short-term rental ordinance. Uh, we've, we took some comments and we made some changes. To our proposed ordinance. Uh, let's see. Tom, you wanna go through those, or you want me to go through those, or? So let's see, what do we change here?
I I can give you a quick summary if you want.
I have it here. Why don't, why don't you go ahead? They're tired of hearing me talk for a little while.
Okay, I think, uh, based on previous discussions and the public comments that you received a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we've proposed a a new version of the ordinance that would establish a a scale. Uh, for one-bedroom and studio apartments to be allowed to rent for one night or longer, up to uh less than thirty days. For two-bedroom residential properties to be, have a minimum stay of two nights or two days. And for anything with more than two bedrooms, three bedrooms and up, would be a minimum stay of five days. Uh, this would be year-round, wouldn't be a seasonal approach at this point in time. Uh, the fee structure of uh mercantile license fee of five hundred dollars for the one-bedroom and studio. Two hundred, um, seven hundred and fifty for the two-bedroom and a thousand dollars for the three-bedroom and up, uh, larger homes. Um, each property would be required to uh post the occupancy limits that would be established by the construction code office. Using the International uh Property Maintenance Code to to calculate those uh limits. That would be required to be posted inside the uh. Property in a prominent place, presumably inside the front door. Uh, would also require that the owner or agent. Received from the rentor, renter, uh, copy of a government-issued ID. Proving that they were at least twenty-one years of age.
Okay.
Um, would also require that if they, if the owner is not present locally, that they designate an agent. To uh act on their behalf. That would mean to be able to accept service, to be able to effectuate repairs. Do anything that the owner would be obligated to do, to name someone locally. That does not have to be a real estate agent. It can be the next-door neighbor, it can be a relative, but they have to have someone local that can be responsible for the property when there's any kind of a. An emergency or disturbance or a complaint that the the police need to contact them. I think that's pretty much it. There's a.
One thing.
Section on violations could lead to the uh suspension or revocation of the license in addition to fines and penalties.
Yep, and then we we, and I added something to this after I got it today. Uh, all short-term rental occupants must abide by the city of Venter's ordinances regarding noise, trash, and parking. And then what I asked to be added, and I I think we are gonna add it, is a copy of these ordinance shall be provided to each tenant and be kept in the rental unit.
Yes.
So I think that's something that that they need to be made aware of as they're renting these places, that look, here's our rules. You gotta abide by them. So I think that's something that that we should do. So that's, this is discussion tonight. So your thoughts on on some of these changes? We did. Take some suggestions here. We called some things from other towns nearby that have certain uh restrictions on them. And this is what we've we've come up with. So I think Mark and Tom did a lot of work, and Jimmy and and Code did a lot of work looking at this. Um.
I think there's some common sense things there. Twenty-one years of age is a common. I think there's some common sense things there. Twenty-one years of age is a common sense thing. You don't wanna. You know, wanna uh, in the invite back, um, trying to not not invite the party houses so that. The the one-bedroom, I think that was carving out for, so that people can still make these business, they they are businesses, but make them. Uh, you know, still be productive. But um, you know, it's a stru- it's it, the re. We're a sh- we are a shore town and 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 this is a part of the evolution of the technology is. Is allowed, just like i- in our everyday workplace where we we are, we we should be embracing the technology that brings people. To the town to use our restaurants and our theater and. And uh.
This keeps our businesses going year-round.
Yeah.
It it does. And and that's what I'm going to lean forward, sorry. So. Look, talking to other towns and the other mayors and and other elected officials about what they want to do with with short-term rentals. And, you know. Populations like ours that explode in the summertime and and kind of dwindle down in the winter. Our businesses need other people here to help them stay open. Um, you know, we are still a seasonal community.
Yeah.
And this helps keep them open. I understand some of our residents don't like them. But I think it's something we're trying to find a happy medium is what we're trying to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this, we hope this works. Um, if if it doesn't, we'll try something else.
Right.
Try something new. Right, so. Um, we'll have open discussion on that during the open public comments, but that's, I think that's all I have. What, you have anything, Maria?
I, yeah, I think the public discussion you did have on this, there were several and it were, was really worked. For us.
It did.
Um, and the ideas that came up, especially the last one we had.
Hmm.
So, it's not perfect for, depending on what side of the fence you sit on. It's not perfect, but I think it's a nice balance and it um. It looks at, you know, the the business of a short-term rental and it looks at the protecting the integrity of the neighborhood. Um. And like you said, you know, it can always be amended if it's not working or it needs to be tweaked. That's something we could do, but. We got a lot of good comments and we include it. We included a lot of them, so that discussion really worked.
It did.
Yeah.
I think the uh, you know. Pausing it was a good idea.
Yeah, great.
I I think that was a good idea.
So I'm in favor of the changes that.
Okay.
Came through.
Good. All right, no more discussion items. Uh, we will open it up to the public on just items that we have on our agenda tonight, the items we've just discussed. So if you have any comments on those, please step forward. Jim, I think we. Added one one line, it looks like.
We got Andy and Annette out here.
Okay. Andy's sitting right here, so.
No, that's.
Does Andy Star right on? You have, you have a body double, Mr. Star. So please step forward, state your name and make your.
Andy Star, one twelve South Oxford. I just wanted to comment on the rehiring of Diana. Um, I didn't know it was, it's not on the agenda. Um, big supporter. She was terrific at the concerts last year. Penny and I involved a lot. There was special events and I just wanted to. Commend the city for hiring her. I think it'll be a a great asset. Thanks.
Good. Thanks, Andy. Anyone else? Sir, come on up. Go Phillies.
Shortest, I think the shortest game in National League history.
Really?
Two hours and five minutes.
Wow.
I'd just gotten back from getting food and it was over. Uh, Warren Borish, one oh one, South Sacramento. I was, I have a question about the uh, motorized bike ordinance. Does that address or include the electric uh. Scooters? That are also.
So handicapped.
Now, these are kids mostly and they're ridden very fast.
With the handle.
Yeah, handle.
Yes.
Yeah.
That that would ins- that would include those.
It does.
Anything battery-powered, motorized would would not be permitted. Hasn't been.
Isn't clearly defined, that's the issue.
Is it motorized? Is it motorized? No. The the ban on the boardwalk is motorized vehicles.
Vehicles. Thank you.
If you got, if you want to speak, you have to get up and give your name. It's not uh, not trying to put you on the spot. It's just part of the. It it's just part of the rules to put it on record.
Uh, Dave Rumsey, um, six zero zero nine, uh. Uh, where do I live? Winchester. Um, I just. On that same topic, um, I see a lot of the um, motorized uh, skateboards. And same, same thing.
Thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thing. Great.
Not allowed.
Cause I see them a lot on the pier a lot.
And to be clear, like I said, this is a point in time where we don't have our. Specials out. So the the enforcement is going to increase when the, our ability to. To enforce it does with the, we 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 don't have, we have hundreds of calls for service for the police department every day. And they're not always near or on the boardwalk where they can respond. But they, um, those calls for service are, take priority. Over something like this, but in the summertime, when they're, when everybody wants to use the same ten, fifteen. Blocks of the boardwalk at the same time, that's when we increase our capacity to enforce it. And that's what we'll be doing. And we are increasing the the fines. So the, we're using a stick here. And we're trying to communicate that as clearly as possible on social media and here tonight.
Why not Beth?
Beth Court, one twenty-five North Derby Avenue. Um, I just wanted to speak on the short-term rental changes. I think most of this sounds very reasonable. I would like to see the way that it's written in the ordinance, just to make sure that it. Does all make sense. Um. No issues whatsoever. I'm a uh, for background, I have. Uh, multiple short-term rentals in Ventnor. Studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Um, I don't have anything larger than that. So, I'm really speaking for myself, but I'm also going to speak. Uh, just my opinion on the three-bedroom and more scale. Uh. But I think the things like twenty-one and over is going to be really helpful to me as a host because we get a lot of requests from eighteen-year-olds and. On Airbnb. We could get banned from the platform for age discrimination if we don't rent to them right now because there is no law against renting to an eighteen-year-old. So that's. Great. Um. I have no problem with the ID. That's something that we do already, again, because we want to be responsible hosts. Um, I would encourage you to still allow one-night rentals for two bedrooms because. From my experience, we've been renting for five years and. Our two bedrooms are still mostly a single family that's coming. It's like. A parent, parents and two kids or three kids. It's not like a group of. People that are coming in to party for the weekend or for one night. Um, especially in the off-season, we get a lot of people who are coming in just for one night for like a tournament or um. Like the gymnastics and uh, cheerleading and there's just a volleyball tournament in. Atlantic City, like we get families that come in for one night just to stay overnight for those types of events. And then they're still going out to breakfast. In the morning or going out to dinner that night in our town. Um. So I would really encourage the two bedrooms to allow for a one-night minimum. I think the five-night minimum is just too much, especially in the off-season. Like those houses are just not going to have any business whatsoever. Um, there's no way to get people to come down for five nights right now. Like, we're lucky if every weekend we get a one-night stay. Right now. So, it's just. Too, it's too much. Um, I'd also like you to consider even just going down to a three-night minimum for those. Rentals for the summer. Because. Though we see in our own properties, the longer people stay, the less likely they are to go out to eat. Or the less likely they are to go like spend money in town because they end up just. Staying in the house and barbecuing or they might order takeout one night and go out one night, but like the longer you stay. It's just a more expensive. It's more expensive for your family to stay in a rental for longer, so they're going to cut costs somewhere, usually by not going out to eat. So, that's something else to consider that, like, I understand that you're trying to. Like get people to stay here longer and help the businesses that way, but it could end up backfiring. And I'm just speaking from my own experience with my, my rentals. Um. So, that's, that's all I really have and I'm happy to answer any other questions like about the Airbnb platform or about. Pro- proper ways to host, like anything that could be helpful to you guys.
I have a question. Do you use the sound? Monitoring in your properties?
We don't in our smaller properties because it's just not necessary.
Right.
Um, but we do and we have larger properties in Atlantic City. Where we use things like that because it is. Like, there is a certain number of bedrooms where then it, there's ten people in the house that. Is more likely to potentially be a problem.
And then what do you do if you do get a decibel level that's high or have you?
We've never had one.
Okay.
So, part of what we experience is that, like, we do require people's IDs. We make sure that they have good reviews. If they're new to the platform and have no reviews, we ask them a lot of questions before they come. So we do a lot of vetting that prevents. Issues like that.
Hmm.
Um.
Her husband's a fireman. He shows up with a fire hose and hoses him down.
Yeah.
It's too loud. I have an extra copy of the of the draft ordinance.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to see it.
Take a look at it. Yeah, I would.
And I I would tend to agree with Beth that the what. Gauging the larger. Units to have uh, the ability to do a three-night or stay in the off-season. I think it makes, it just make, it just seems like common sense to me.
So maybe do it a blend during the season, it's it's fine. And then off-season, we knock it back to a three-night.
I would recommend to, for the off-season, just because you're still, it's just going to be a Friday, Saturday night, like people are.
Also, the off-season is when our residents.
Yeah.
Have the off-season. That's, so it should be a little quieter. So that's what we're trying to balance here. Um, because it is. It is a business in a residential area, so that's the problematic aspect that we're trying to deal with. Cause we hear both sides of it.
Yeah, I understand that. And. As a person that also lives on a street with Airbnbs, like, I'm not outside of that. Like, that's part of my life too.
Sure.
So. I still would rather not be able to park directly in front of my house and have people in town. Going to the local businesses and supporting our community than, like, I'm just not. One that's going to complain about having to park a few houses down. I understand it can be a significant inconvenience for other people, especially the elderly, if you have groceries, whatever, like. I have a toddler. When he was an infant, I didn't like that I had to park down the street sometimes and carry the car seat half a block, but. I would still rather do that than not have people visit the town and help. Pay for the rest of us to live here and enjoy it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Input. Thanks, Beth. Anyone else? Ben?
Ben Yeller with one.
Other side of the coin.
Yeah, yeah, on the other side of the coin. So one north Nashville, Ventnor. I moved to Ventnor because it was a community. Not, I didn't expect that I was going to be living next to a Motel Six, basically. And what I see, the, you know, having it down to a one-night minimum in the summer doesn't solve any problems. Number one. Number two, parking is a major issue on streets that don't have additional parking available. I mean, I have two cars. I can't park one of them out front most days. That's in off-season, let alone when we come in-season, we're going to have all these additional Airbnbs. Air and B and B residents coming in. I just don't see the reasoning for having a one-night stay in any part of this.
We're eliminating that.
No.
For the, for the one.
For the first, for one bedrooms.
Yeah, we are allowing.
So do you, so you have any one-bedrooms or studios? In your area?
Yes, we do. I have probably two illegal triplexes right now being rented out as Airbnbs right in front of my house.
They're illegal?
Illegal.
I I don't think they're legal triplexes. Cause they are, they have three different doors and I see dif- different people coming in and out all different times.
Can you send me those addresses?
Yeah, I think I had previously, but I think it's four and six north Nashville. I can, I'll verify that to you later, but. And then there's one behind me, but that one has people coming and going all year long. And, you know, one-night stays all day long.
Is Nashville parking only on one side?
No, we have two-sided parking, but it's a one-way street and it's a very narrow street, number one.
Yeah.
With lots of curb cuts for driveways.
Right.
That aren't being used as driveways, but still.
Right.
It's a very limited amount of parking there.
Yeah.
You know, I'm fortunate that I have a new garage behind my house.
Yeah.
With a driveway, but I can't park my second car out on the street most of the time and we really can't park. It's a common driveway behind for the six, eight new townhouses they built that lose, where lose used to be.
Right.
Yeah, they have their own common rear driveway.
Right.
But you really are not allowed to park behind your own garage. Because it would impede somebody else's access.
Behind, behind, oh.
Yeah, because.
And you're, did you have an easement there?
Yeah, well, there's an easement, you know, because we all share the.
Share the driveway.
That the driveway and the access to in front.
You make a corner turn into that?
What's that?
Can you even make a turn into that driveway?
Oh, yeah, you can make, yeah, it's, it's fine. You know, they have it blocked off so you can turn in and out.
They first started.
They first started.
Right.
Lines painted.
Yeah, so they have the proper lines painted on each side of the the access to the driveway.
Yeah, you're in a specifically that, one of the more densely. Um, one of the more densely populated areas in Ventnor. They're not all as dense as yours, so you're, you got a heavy lift to begin with.
Well, that's the issue and I'm not sure that these ones that are being, you know, that are triplexes are really legal triplexes. So that's something that city needs to get a look at. You know, building inspection needs to take a better look at it and see what's going on there.
Hmm.
We will do that.
And I didn't get a copy of the ordinance. I didn't know that it was going to be on the topic for tonight.
It's not being introduced tonight.
Okay, so so it's still not approved at this point?
No.
Okay, because I know.
We will have to introduce it again because we changed it.
So there'll have to be another public hearing again. Uh, because I have my, all of my neighbors, I'm like representing eight new residents of Margate. What's that?
You're an attorney now?
No, I'm just representing them as a, you know, an advocate. So I'll be reporting back to them and you might have all them here at the next meeting.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? We don't have to just talk about short-term rentals. A lot of other things we can talk about. Anyway, all right. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. And call it, call to order a regular portion of the meeting. Motion, please.
Motion to close the reg- the workshop and open the regular meeting.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so with that, we will go into our formal hearing, formal meeting, approval minutes. We have none. Ordinance introductions. We have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six and ordinance amending chapter one fifty-three, section five. Regarding violations and penalties of operation motorized vehicles, motorized bicycles. Shouldn't that say vehicles though, now that I read that?
No, I think it does say. Um.
Cause the ban on the boardwalk says vehicles, this says bicycles. I just realized that.
Mm-hmm.
I think it should say vehicles.
Here's, here's what the code says, you know?
So it's motorcycles and motorbikes. Is the section one fifty three and it's operation motorized bicycles. So I think we should change the title of that to motorized vehicles.
I agree.
So as part of this ordinance introduction, because we're introducing it, Mark, we can do that right now?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to amend that as well to say vehicles.
And if it anywhere within, if it says bicycles, it should say vehicles.
Yes.
Anywhere, anything within.
Anything with.
Bicycle should be changed for a vehicle.
Let me ask you a question. Do we need to look at definitions of those? Or is is motorized vehicles a term of art that you can just?
I mean, it's comprehensible enough.
Okay, all right.
Whether it's electric or gas.
But that so that should be changed throughout that section. All right, good. Glad I read that again.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa. So I need a motion to introduce that ordinance, please, as noted with the changes as noted.
Motion to introduce ordinance two zero two three dash zero zero three as described and revised.
Zero zero six.
Zero zero six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Okay, we need a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero seven amending chapter seventy nine, section seven regarding violations and penalties for having animals on the boardwalk. Motion, please.
Motion to introduce ordinance as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Last introduction introduction in ordinances, ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight, chapter one oh five, amending chapter one oh five, section fifteen regarding violations and penalties regarding unleashed unleashed animals. Motion, please.
Motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight as described.
Second.
Is that on this one, chief?
No, going back to the angles, I believe the chapter seventy nine.
All right, let me let me finish this one and we'll go back to that one.
Seventy nine four public, the operation of vehicles.
Okay.
Right.
Let me finish this other introduction and we'll go back to that in a second. So you, we.
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. All right. Now let's take a look back at zero zero six because we might have to amend that. Can you hand me what I could add? But chief, I'm looking at one fifty three and it says motorcycles and motorbikes. And a section of that is operation of motorized bicycles. And it really doesn't, it gives it gives a definition.
I can do it right here.
Seventy nine four?
So these are this specifically, it looks like it addresses them on the boardwalk.
Unattended vehicles.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yeah.
There is a chapter seventy nine boardwalk. And I'll I'll get that on.
It's under restrictions. And it says bicycles.
Yeah, I think this section deals with the fines, chief. So this section just deals with fines. So because it does reference, there's other chapters you're talking about. So I think we're fine. So we will double check before we come back for public.
Thirty nine four is the overriding ordinance. Yeah. So. Right.
We could have adopted it and then make sure.
Right.
Leave it open and make sure it's a right, a section, right title, right.
Right. I'm looking at this. This is the whole section of one fifty three. It's it's literally talking about prohibitions, violations of penalties. Operation of motorized bicycles, we're going to change that to vehicles and then definitions. And then use prohibited on boardwalk and then the fines. That's all that one fifty three is, is the fine.
If I may, mayor, as as Mr. Niemath suggested, you've already discussed this. Your intentions are very clear on the record as to what it is you want to do. So I think you can go ahead and introduce it by title and we'll make sure that we get the appropriate language and all that before it's published or before it becomes a final document.
I agree.
Okay, that works. Thanks for mentioning that, chief. We want to get it right.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we do not have any public hearings on ordinances. We do not have any adoption of ordinances. When the resolutions, I gotta add forty nine and fifty, correct? So we need a motion to adopt resolutions by consent, twenty twenty three, one three nine through twenty twenty three, one five zero.
Motion to adopt resolutions as described by consent.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Need approval of bills and payroll as indicated by Amy, our CFO or acting CFO.
Payrolls for this period, five hundred eighty two thousand, six hundred fifty four dollars and ninety one cents. The payables for this period, two million, five hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred seven dollars, eighteen cents.
Okay, your motion approved, please.
Motion approved bills and payroll.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
I recuse myself from twenty three dash zero zero seven seven one, which is the second quarter user fee payment to the ACUA. Everything else, yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Announcements and safety report. The safety report is in our is on our agenda. Uh, it's listed on our website as well. Meets our JIF requirements. Commissioner comments and reports, uh, Mr. Mento, how many?
Well, as you know, I'm the commissioner of revenue and finance and there's not a lot of exciting things that go on there other than uh, all the workings of the department every day and and municipal clerk's office, but right now we're in the middle of finishing up the budget, getting ready for introduction. And I spent the better part of the afternoon going through that. I have a headache. And looking for anything that could equal a penny on the tax rate. I gave Amy and Tom some questions. I don't know how. I'm sure she'll have answers for me that um, aren't going to be the ones I want, but um, that that's what they're focusing on now and what the office is focusing on now. Other than that, it's status quo, day to day. Um, you did hear we just hired someone to help us on the rec side who used to be uh, working for us on beach tags and we are looking to hire an assistant beach tag supervisor. And I think we interviewed someone this afternoon. No, she didn't come in. Okay, so you hear it here. We're looking for applicants for assistant beach badge supervisor. It does involve weekends and it does involve getting out on the beach. So um, it's sun and it's walking and it's dealing with people that don't want to buy a beach badge. Um, but it's a good job and it's a great city and
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good group of people and you would love it. Get a nice tan, right? So um, please send in your applications.
Yep. Mr. Kribel?
Um, I have two things kind of uh, and a couple of just comments. Um, one thing that I think I sent you guys emails on that I'd like to start is uh, as uh, is to uh, in our municipal lot offer free parking uh, during on Fridays for the uh, farmer's market. I see Andy's here. I think we have a consensus on that, that in the municipal lot, right? Adjacent to where the the farmer's market is, just trying to to give them uh, just to make that more welcoming. The parking lot on the beach block might be something that we can work into since that is hour, the hours can be in a conflict with people that are going to the beach. So we want to make sure that we're not giving people so, you know, tickets that are just going to the beach after noon, but the the farmer's market does end at noon.
Right.
And most people are are, most people are arriving at the beach in the afternoon, but not all. So it's beaches are open at ten. So there could be some conflict. I talked to the chief about how that gets the the gymnastics of that, but I would like to include that as well. And then um, and then also some food for thought is um, something that the chief and I have been talking about is um, the logistics of Park Mobile and our our meters. Um, so when you put on one side of the scale, the fact that we have meters that have to be maintained, that have to be purchased, that have to be uh, um, a chaperoned police officer has to meet with someone to take the coins uh, out of each uh, meter and then a person at the finance department has to count them and that has to be chaperoned to the bank. Um, and our parking enforcement people have to monitor the meters and Park Mobile in the same areas in some cases makes it uh, makes a good case for turning the entire city over to Park Mobile. And that's the recommendation of of the police chief and the VA at this point in our discussions. So I'd like to talk to you about that.
Question I have on that. How much, how much change you pulling out of these? Have we seen that go down with the advent of Park Mobile?
Yeah.
Significantly?
And and we have maintenance.
I know the maintenance, trust me, I know the maintenance.
Yeah. We have the maintenance with isn't just a dollar number, it's time.
Right, right. All right, well, if we could take a look at that, I I'm not objection, I don't have objections to, I just wanted.
Right.
There are, there is a population that's not quite smartphone savvy yet.
Right.
Um.
And that's going to be, I think that's going to be the exception, not the rule, but um, but the ability to put our, you know, to put the but our, the the people that are um, uh, in our staff at work in their most critical tasks. Parking meters might is is this is an evolution in the world of parking meters. They're all over the East Coast and all over the the world really at this point. Um, and they can be programmed to have the same, to follow the ordinances in terms of time and location that we have. So then the other thing I have is uh, just to get out for coming up on May sixth, we have the block party coming up. Um, which is right here on Ventnor Avenue nearby Beer Garden Music Games, Crafters Food on May sixth from ten uh, to five. And then also seeing Shelley here in the audience. Uh, coming up on May twenty first from four to eight, we have the chef's night out. Every year it's bigger and better than ever. Every year there's more and more people uh, that are more and more, this year I think there's twenty two people, twenty five stops along the way. So come hungry and and um, it's one of the um, and it's it's unique in that the beautification offers uh, the gift offers uh, offers all the 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 proceeds of these have been put to use in the city in different ways with trash cans and banners and 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 all sorts and signage, the welcome to Ventnor signs on both sides of the city. These are all part of the beautification process that Shelley does all the heavy and her husband who just walked down does all the heavy, all the heavy lifting. But but I want to thank you again for all you do and keep in mind the twenty second, it's it's twenty first, Sunday, the twenty first, it's coming up.
All right. Um, just a couple of updates. The paving projects out in the heights, Oxford. Dudley Marshall Street, that should be finishing up. They should be in the next couple of weeks, I hope, with good weather, putting in some staff base this week and then finishing up in the next couple of days. Project out here, we just talked about tonight. Um, it's moving forward. That'll be a nice addition. As said, there's a charging station there now. It's a dual charging station, one for our public work or public um, code office vehicle. And then there'll be one for the public. So public and that will be charged um, based on their credit card. You have to have a credit card to to pay for that charging.
Hmm.
Um, last thing I have is Ventnor City Beach Patrol Headquarters. We'll be opening that up on May twenty seventh. We're going to do it to coincide with their roll call, which should be fun for the guys and ladies um, at eight thirty in the morning. So we usually do our ribbon cutting around ten AM. We're going to do to open the beaches, certainly open to the beaches. We're going to open up HQ on um, five twenty seven at eight thirty in the morning.
Nightclub.
Nice.
It does. Building is 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 coming out really nice. Um, they put the furniture in this week.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, so that's going well. We had their final inspections this week as well. Hopefully they went well. Um, but the building's looking great.
Yeah.
Good contractor on it and and it's it's looking nice.
I'm looking forward to handing that over to Chief Bergman, his staff. This is a landmark for not just the boardwalk, but to it it's 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 one of our, it's our biggest draw and and they run a, they run a very efficient ship over there and they and this is a place for that that department to grow. They become, uh, gives them a place to train more, gives them a place to uh, to 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 really um, to really serve the city from safety.
Agreed. The other building had passed its time.
Hundred percent.
Definitely passed its time. Uh, with that, we'll go to public comment on anything anybody wants to talk about tonight. So I need a motion open to the public.
Motion open to public.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so if you have anything to say, come on up.
Warren Borish, one oh one South Sacramento. I apologize, this is probably relatively late in the in the game, but I was uh, interested in whether or not uh, there was any action discussion with the status of the change in the traffic lanes and pattern, traffic patterns on Atlantic Avenue.
So um, we're most likely not going to do the road diet. You're talking about here in Ventnor, correct?
I am talking about here in Ventor. I live on Atlantic Avenue.
Gotcha.
I'm very sensitive to the traffic patterns. Atlantic Avenue between Fredericksburg and Dorset.
Jacks.
Jack, well, but really this particular stretch has become like a speedway. I don't know anybody that doesn't do forty, forty five miles an hour. I I can't cross the street with my dogs without taking my life in my hands. And I think it's it's really
So.
unfortunate from a quality of life perspective, from a safety perspective, that Ventnor doesn't join in this.
Hmm. So it it's it's fine in the winter time to drive through Margate right now. It's not fine in the summertime. It's it's just not, the volume of traffic that we have here in Ventnor is twice that what they have in in Margate. Five times what they get in Longport. So our traffic builds here with with the number of cars that come through our community. Because it's all those plus our community driving through that area. So putting that down to one lane in each direction from a traffic planning standpoint, it is just not something that I would support. I didn't, I didn't like the idea from the start. Um, it it can create severe traffic jams. I understand your concern about pedestrian traffic and and we encourage people to cross at the traffic lights. Uh, we do have crosswalks on the op on non controlled intersections. But we encourage everybody to try and cross when they can at a traffic light, or if not, time them between the other two lights. That's what I do here. I live, Tim and I live right back here. So that's why I use this traffic signal. In the winter time, I may not wait for the green light, but I wait till the other ones change and then you can get across the street.
And they're not always at sync. That's part of the.
Well, that's, we have a new project hopefully coming up that we will be working on synchronizing those lights.
I mean, it's when this one goes red and that one's green or it's, you really have to, it's very, it's.
It's a very antiquated system. It was in, those lights were installed probably in the seventies and they have the same timers as they did back then. So that's difficult. Um, we will ask chief and and his police department to to be ever vigilant on on speeders. Uh, you know, you're right, people don't always follow the the speed limits here. Um, I I'll give you an example of what really turned me away from this road diet. Last summer, I'm in Margate. Um, I'm actually coming through Margate. A golf cart pulls out in front of me doing eighteen miles an hour because I have a digital speedometer. And all right, summer day, I don't really care. I'll cruise down the street. I'll get home when I get home. No real urgency. There's four blocks of cars behind me. I can't get around a golf cart doing eighteen miles an hour. So that that's a problem um, that you'll get people angry and.
Well, I've seen them. That's that's part of my concern. I've seen them get angry. I've seen them pass me because I'm doing thirty, let's say.
Right.
And I've seen them pass me in the bike lane on the right hand side. I've seen them go around me and pass me on the other side.
That's
That's in Margate.
That happens on Ventnor Avenue now.
It's it's insane, but I don't, my concern is that the the availability of the four lanes here only increase the aggressiveness of the drivers that are coming through then. They take advantage of the fact that they have been limited in in Margate. Uh, that's a done deal. So you're not going to change that. They take advantage of that fact. They come north on Atlantic Avenue and they're driving like crazy. They're very aggressive.
I know what we did last year and I'll, and you can confirm this if you could, right as Memorial Day started, we put one of our radar guns out there that tells people slow down and it's digital, gets their speed. And we can actually, we track the data. We don't, it doesn't take a picture of you. But it does track the data as to how many people are doing over the speed limit, doing the speed limit and whatever. We get that report. Um, and if we see a lot of that, then that's when the cars start going out and start pulling people over.
Yeah, I I, you know, obviously more enforcement I think would be helpful.
Yes.
I, it's really unfortunate that the speeds are just out of control. If people do not respect the speed limits.
I agree with you there. I do agree with you there. I know Chief Cahill had a had his hand up.
I, it's hard for me to see that because you can go around those, the right, the turn lanes. What are you doing with that?
Well, take that or out.
Well, part of the problem is everybody takes away the gap. All the commercial vehicles, everybody takes Atlantic Avenue is really what Ventnor Avenue I think was supposed to be. Then your avenue was supposed to be your business route. It's not.
So one of the other, and I've talked to the Margate officials and their governing body about this, one of the
Yeah.
Problems that the road diet caused there is it pushed vehicles off of Atlantic Avenue. And it pushed them onto the side streets. It pushed them onto vendor avenue. It pushed them onto Winchester and Monmouth. So those streets, they're seeing more accidents and more vehicles on those streets than they do on Atlantic. So I would rather keep this as our throughway.
It is definitely that.
It is that. Um, and and I'll I'll say this and and you may or may not know this, I'm very involved in Atlantic City. I don't see that road diet happening up there.
They were going to do it at Stockton. They changed their mind.
Well, they've started, they got funding to start it up the other end of town. They were starting at Maine to Tennessee.
Right.
I have it on pretty good authority that that's not going to happen because that would be a nightmare doing it in Atlantic City.
Yeah, my my other concern is, and and I've lived here for a long time, not always full time, but I'm here full time for a half a dozen years now. And part of the the issue, particularly in the summer months, is the expectation when people are in the crosswalks and Jersey law requires traffic to stop for people in the crosswalks. One lane will stop and historically the other lane either can't see or won't stop and they drive right through and it's a nightmare.
It is. I've seen that. That that is a big concern. Um, what what I think we can try and do is is post on our social media sites and get it out there as much as we can, our website and and things like that. Talk about it here like you're doing tonight and and try and get it out to people that, you know, look, it's a four lane roadway here. You've got to watch for pedestrians. Um, the other alternative is to take away the the crosswalks at the non signalized.
Well, that's.
That would be even worse. So.
That would be worse from my perspective.
Exactly. So it it's be careful and watch where you're walking. And if it's a crowded day, try and get to a traffic controlled intersection. That's what I could say.
So so you're not, it's not falling on deaf ears. We struggle with this all the time. And I've talked to both Chief Cahill and Chief Fussner about this, his complete, his concerns about getting uh, response times is, I'm looking at his report right now in July, he does uh, between June, July and August, they do more than thirty percent of their calls.
Yeah, the EMTs are busy.
EMTs are busy. So they get those bad apparatus down the street. In time means lives. So EMTs are busy. So to get those, that apparatus down the street in time means lives. So that, that's a priority. But I hear you, there's, there's that, that, that pedestrian refuge that the, that the, that the road diet offers and the ability to slow traffic. I think the traffic is slowed in Margate to some extent by that narrowing. Um, but there's also, they have the, the bike lanes there are a little too wide in my opinion because uh, I've been passed on the bike lane in there and I think I'm not the only one. Um, people don't really see how that works. So I think that if we can get the signal, the signals um, uh, uh, synchronized, we, we're looking at a grant that um, would improve the existing poles, but synchronize them in a way that used to be back in the eighties where you could go thirty-five miles an hour, thirty mi- twenty, twenty-four, five miles an hour down and the lights would hit you, there'd be less that frustration. Part of that hitting the gas, I think, is that people are trying to get pit, to get caught on these unsynchronized lights and get to the next light.
That's part of it for sure.
So if they were synchronized and you knew and people became trained that you're going to get to Atlantic City at twenty-five or thirty miles an hour, then you might have less of that. Um, you might, you might get, but you might get more of a benefit, right? But I'm, I'm still, I was still hopeful that the, the road diet would answer all of it, but I don't think it does.
Yeah.
When I, you know, look at Wellington, Wellington's one lane in each direction. It's a major thoroughfare, commercial and
Yeah.
residential.
Right.
It works.
It's also forty-five miles an hour.
It's forty-five miles an hour because of the location. There's no residents to, to really deal with until you get close to the city.
Yeah.
But, and Ventnor Avenue's one lane in each direction. This is because it's four lanes in each direction is everybody's throughway.
Right.
And it's treated as a throughway and that's what's problematic if you live over here.
Right.
Understand the concerns. We're, we're kind of stuck, it's sort of, I keep saying, we're stuck in the middle of that, but I, I just don't see it. The recommendations from our, our chiefs is just not something that we think we, that would be the benefi- the most beneficial to our community.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah.
Anyone else, Warren?
Hi, Dave Rumsey from six zero zero nine Winchester. Um, I wasn't really prepared to talk about this, but uh, this gentleman's uh, bringing up the traffic uh, has brought up, made me think about something that I've been thinking about since I moved here um, to the current location um, two years ago. And that is, um, I live right on the corner of Winchester and Cornwall. Um, Snake Alley and uh, the first uh, Cornwall, Cornwall meets uh, Winchester in two spots actually, but um, it, in the first one where I live, um, that it has one of those stop signs that flashes. I, I mean, it doesn't do anything. People, I, I can't tell you how many times I've seen near misses on that corner and horns blowing. Another problem is that Cornwall is two, two-way, which a lot of people don't realize. So maybe, and I think that there is a a, a sign that says two-way traffic, you know, so that people know that. But because of where folks park on the east side, I guess of um, of Cornwall and to the south of uh, of Winchester, that corner there, it's difficult for people to see who are like turning, making a left turn, trying to go out to Winchester. And then the next corner down by the Public Works Building had a stop sign. It led, I believe it was supposed to have a blinking stop sign. Blinking stop sign is not there and uh, and people just like, don't stop at all there. Uh, and I mean, I see it's a problem sometimes even when folks are pulling out of
We'll take a look at that intersection. I don't, I don't know what I recall a stop sign being there, but we can, we'll look at it.
There, there is a stop sign there, but not a, uh, not a blinking one.
Yeah, and just to give you a little background from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, that whole neighborhood was contacting us to get that blinking stop sign there for that. You were part of it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm glad it's there.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not complaining about it. Um, I, I think there ought to be one maybe down at the other, at the other intersection of when, you know, by where the entrance to the uh, parking lot is for Public Works. Because, you know, trucks are coming out of there. People aren't stopping.
There is a stop sign.
There is a stop sign, but I mean, a, a, a blinking one. I, I don't know. The other thing that I thought about, and I don't know if this is even a possibility, but is it possible that every, I don't know, five, ten blocks, maybe they could put a stop sign on Monmouth and or Winche- and Winchester actually to kind of, that becomes kind of a throughway. I've been noticing traffic gets uh,
Right.
Like, cause I, I drive the speed limit and people are on my tail because they're, I'm going too slow and um, and I just wondered if, you know, it might work to have people
One of, one of the things we installed there on both of those roads was those digital
Right.
signs.
Right.
And when we did
That's how I know I'm going the right speed limit.
They, they also, as I said before, they take data. Take your speed and they document that.
Uh-huh.
Again, it doesn't take your license plate, anything like that. It just documents the speed.
Hmm.
And when we did that, it showed the people weren't going as fast.
Yeah, there's some perception also, the biggest, um, the biggest, I believe, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest place where non-compliance is on Atlantic Avenue. And those streets were not as, there was a, there was low like in the twenty percentile. But, and there is a process for the Department of Transportation to get stop signs. It doesn't happen overnight, right?
They'll never get stop signs along the roads.
Yeah. Right.
No.
Okay.
And it stops on bottom of the where people normally would expect to stop. So two, eight, the side of roads. You want to pull that intersection, pull up. Um, and, and
This brought up a lot. What do I know?
We wouldn't get it.
You wouldn't get it.
Okay. What do you, he calls warrants. They call, you have, you have to have warrants that prove you the need for these stop signs.
Got you.
We have looked into it. Uh, probably every two years we get
Yeah.
asking. We do take a look at it.
Speed bumps is the next thing that people have.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, okay, I, I just, the main problem I know is the running of the stop sign at Winchester and, and Cornwall. I mean, yeah. Okay.
Okay, but to tie it together, if we did do the road diet, you would probably see that, you would, you see an increase in all of those things.
Yeah.
I, I'm not in favor of the road.
Right, but I'm just saying, tying the conversation together.
I got you.
I, I think there's a, you know, you're trying to shift, put so much through a particular funnel here and that, and that, that Snake Alley, since I was a kid learning how to drive stick shift on, has been the back road, so to speak, to get where you're, to get to Margate faster.
Yep.
And it would be increased.
Okay.
Thanks, David. Anyone else? Beth?
Beth Court, one twenty-five North Erby Avenue. Hmm, I'm just looking at the proposed ordinance for short-term rentals. There were two things that I wanted to
So when that's introduced, we'll have, we, go ahead, you know, nevermind, go ahead.
Okay, just if you want to reconsider things before you introduce it. Um, with the government ID, it says that it shall be provided to the construction code officials. Um, I think that is an unnecessary paperwork burden to put on the construction code officials.
For your tenants. That's for the person that, that they're naming to be their representative.
I understand. Oh, no, that's not, that's not what it says in here.
That's how I understood it.
Okay, this in section
Your tenants.
Okay, then you might want to change in one forty-nine point one eight E. It says the government ID that the owner or agent gets from the tenant needs to be provided to the construction code official.
Right, that's for the person that they're naming. If they're not here year-round, that's for the person they're naming.
No, that's in a different section.
Uh, uh, if, if she's right, we're not putting that in there.
I, I think what's, what's missing there is by request. So if the construction code office needs to go to that place because of a complaint, then they're going to want to see the ID of the person that rented it to prove that they were of legal age. So there, there is some fine tuning that needs to happen to that. We're missing, missing that phrase. It was not intended that everyone was going to be passed on to the construction.
I didn't read it that way, so make sure that's clear.
Okay, we'll fix that.
Okay, you're welcome. And then
If, if I may, Beth, if you have any other suggestions, please feel free to email them to us.
Okay. So should I just sit? There's just one more. Um, sorry, I was just going to recommend to define the fines and penalties in section four. It just says fines and penalties if the um, owners don't comply. There's no, it's not like, uh, like you guys were just tonight further defining fines and penalties for people who are not complying to ordinances. And then this is just completely vague. There's not actually a finer penalty. So I would
The mark and fill section of the ordinance.
Okay.
That's where the fines are for market sale violations.
Okay. Um, and then one more thing just separately to consider looking at the data that you have from the homes that are getting complaints to see, um, just like going back to the two-bedroom versus three-bedroom thing to see if there are a lot of two bedrooms that are also getting complaints or if it is mostly three bedrooms and larger or even four bedrooms and larger when uh, you're defining the, the nightly stays.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look at that, we can pull that down.
I think it's mostly the large bedroom.
It is.
Yeah. I think it's almost, I think it's almost exclusively the larger bedrooms. And there's not that many complaints. We encourage complaints because then, then we can enforce, but, but there, there are only, it, it tends to be one or two units per season, same units, then they get cited and then it stops.
Yeah, part of the issue that, that came up during the general public discussions on, on the short-term rentals was that we don't want to call. If you don't call, we don't know there's an issue. So
Yeah, and I don't want to belittle it, but there are close to two hundred and fifty, I think, in the city in that neighborhood. And we only, and we have only uh, less than ten prob- with less than ten problem locations, I would say, from what I've been told and seen. But we do want to enforce it. If there are problems, we encourage all the owners and the neighbors to call. Usually it's door opening and closing in the evenings when people are coming back.
Right, and parking.
And parking.
Parking.
We're not making any more parking spots.
No. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion to close.
Motion to close, public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, a, anything else? No, we have to go into executive. So we are going to go into executive session. Lisa, did you read that for me?
Certainly. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within the executive session. As an exception to certain provisions of said law, the Ventnor City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action bonding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken with an executive session. And the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. The matters to be discussed are potential litigation.
Yes, we uh, just discussed some potential litigation. Uh, no decision was made. Um, and uh, that's about it.
Okay. That, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
You adjourned some.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Somebody waiting for me.